Good evening. My name is Mark Holkey. I am your Acting Sergeant at Arms and your Chairman this evening and your VP of Membership. We have some guests among us tonight. Gail Shirley, stand up Gail, wave. And our area Director left her glasses at home, so you don't recognize her. Lynn Herzog, oh she's gone. Is this an official club visit or did you want to join the club Lynn?
No, I'm doing official visits.
She can join.
No, I'm not ready quite yet.
Close the door.
I have a comment about how we sign up for roles in this club, which lately has just been outstanding because everybody's greedy to get those speaking spots and people are signing up for things. But they seem to not be signing up for General Evaluator and Chairman. Have you noticed that lately? I'd signed up for GE a long time ago and I saw a week ago, nobody signed up for Chairman. It's the best speaking role of the night. You get all kinds of opportunities. So I would like to encourage people, if you're not signing up for a speech, think of Chairman first. Think of GE second. Those are both great roles. And thank you Ben for being the last guy to the party to sign up for a role this week, but you took the big one, so thank you. I'd like to call on our Grand Mary and Christina Cruz to give us the watery word of the day.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This evening, the word is hydrated. It means to cause, to absorb water, or to supply water to a person to maintain or restore food. An example in a sentence would be, "The runner was hydrated after the race when he finished his bottle of water." Try to use the word hydrated throughout our meeting, which is all about water this evening.
She didn't explain her role as Grand Mary, of course, but you all know that. I'd like you all to introduce yourself and answer this question. If you could make a difference to the world's water supply, what is the one thing you personally could do and how you run your life to make things better in terms of water? And I'd like to start at the back with JC.
Water. I was just looking for my water bottle because when I feel hydrated, immediately drink a water. And in Canada, we have plenty full of fresh water. So all of us, please cherish what we have. Thank you.
Okay, I didn't answer the question, but carry on, Ben, your next question.
How can I change what I do to make my water use more responsive? I'm not sure there's a great deal I can do because I've known about visual water for probably thirty years. I've already installed low-flush toilets in the house. We have a little taps and Dusty drinks everything I put in her bowl down the last room. We're pretty water-conscious in America. And my name is Ben Farkelson.
If everyone could be really prepared and just speak a little quicker than Ben did, that would be helpful.
Mr. Chairman, fellow Toastmasters, and I'm Anthony. My name is Anthony. This evening I'll be giving an evaluation. Three things that I would do to improve water. Number one is bathe only once a week. I'm at three right now, but I can bring it down to once a week. The second I could do is to not leave the water running when I'm brushing my teeth. And brush my teeth also once a week. And the third is to do more quality into less quantity, especially for clothing. Because the kind of the clothing is a lot of water.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, fellow Toastmasters. And I'm here for my club visits. Lynn Herzog, your area Director. Like Anthony says, to conserve water, I would do, well, I do and should do three things. I do turn off the water when I brush my teeth between cleaning it off. I could always turn off the water when I'm in the shower between, oh. That is a conservation that they recommend is that you get yourself all soaked up and you turn off the water between then or rinsing and you're not the shower is not always doing, you would say. And I'm also, as a gardener, I have a large rain barrel when I collect the water off.
Yeah, rain barrels.
Good afternoon or evening, Mr. Chairman, fellow Toastmasters and guests. My name is Val Arison and I am a, I think I'm a responsible water user. However, I need to start using more water. I know that goes against with what we're doing. But about a year ago, we had a renovation and we installed the low-flush, the low-flow things and I decided to do less laundry and to not run the water as often, et cetera, et cetera. And our aesthetic field froze. So we have a huge problem now, which is going to take copious amounts of water to actually fix the problem. So my goal is to start doing more laundry, take longer showers and start using that dishwasher again instead of hand washing like we have been doing last year. There.
Okay, everyone, this is not tabletop. This is introduction, answer the question, move along.
Oh, too long.
Good evening, members, guests, most fabulous guests. My name is Gregori.
Yes, Abraham.
I'm not hydrated, Gregori. I don't have the advice for you for saving water, but I know that Russ Dantou encourages group showers.
My name is Richard Maury and I have a lovely rainwater system. It holds two thousand liters, has a pressure pump, costs probably four hundred dollars to put in and I might save five dollars a year. Use that for watering the gardens. But other than that, I don't drink water, drink beer instead.
Fellow Toastmasters and honored guests, my name is Joanna Smith. The way I save on water is simply to get a heating blanket because every night I jumps into the tub to get warm so I can sleep.
Good evenings, my name is Christina Cruz. I think one of the biggest ones is to turn the tap off when you brush your teeth. So we've encouraged all the family to do that and hopefully that saving water from the Cruzes.
Fellow Toastmasters, honored guests, I'm Jocelyn Hasty and I conserve water by bathing only in my hot tub.
Good evening, fellow Toastmasters and guests, my name is Cheryl Dust. And probably where I can save water is I could just not stay in that shower so long, but it's the next best place to be in a city.
Fellow Toastmasters, my name is Gail Shirley. And I'm going to start watching what I do with the water tap when I'm brushing my teeth because I never even thought about that until somebody mentioned it. So that will be my goal, turn off the tap between cleans.
Mr. Chairman, fellow Toastmasters and honored guests. I would stop forgetting the sprinkler on in the summer. I will wear my shirts more than once. And I think that's about it, that would help. Thank you very much.
My name is Roger Savazan.
Fellow Toastmasters, I'm Lana Asichak. I would save water by, I think I just turning it off in between washing dishes, rinsing, you know, brushing my teeth, all of those things.
Mr. Chairman, fellow Toastmasters and honored guests, my type of quick things I need. I would conserve water by just taking less time in the shower.
Mr. Toastmaster, fellow Toastmasters and very welcome guests, I'm Ray Bolbale. I would actually have a propaganda program to tell everyone to be very careful how much you drink because water causes rust.
Mr. Chairman, fellow Toastmasters, my name is John McDonald. I get to play the role of President tonight.
Finally.
Looking around the room, there's one way that I know I could save on water in the shower is if I had a better haircut.
I go to the stylist.
And also in the bathroom, there's this little poem that I heard a few years ago that also reflects on water usage. If it's yellow, let it mellow. If it's brown.
Flush it down, there you go.
Chairman, I'm area Director, fellow Toastmasters and welcome guests, my name is Carrie Rissai. I came from a farm where we had to really conserve water. We had well water and dugout. So I would have a sister in my house, which is excellent for rain, for washing clothes and doing any kind of washing. And I've got all the conservation devices in my home right now, so I would just go back to more of those practices that I grew up with.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Area Director, fellow Toastmasters, yes, my name is Susan Kramer. I'm going to ask my son to move out and I know that will reduce my water consumption.
Mr. Chairperson, fellow Toastmasters, most welcome guests, Madam Area Director, my name is Russ Dantou. We have underground sprinkler system and it's really cool because we can set it for the zones, ten minutes a zone, twice a week. And our grass is nice and green instead of leaving that sprinkler on for like an hour, hour and a half. Second thing is, they do it in third world countries and I knew my mom did it growing up where there was seven people in the house and they had one big bucket where people actually had to, all the kids would do the bath in or they would just take a cloth in there and just not bath every day. So I don't know that I could do that, but that would be another way.
Good evening, everybody, I'm Dave Burns. Coming from a place that's usually on fire or flooded, I'm pretty good at water conservation, but I guess I could walk around the neighborhood and turn off everybody's sprinklers when they do it at midday, which is the dumbest time to do it because it all goes into the air.
I think the best way is the old pioneer Canadian way. Big bathtub in the middle of the kitchen, kettles boiling water, Saturday night, everybody takes turns. Thank you all for answering the question. I now like to call upon Gregori to give us his dealer's choice. Please come forward.
Done is better than perfect. That's a saying in business. Here's an example. The first Apple iPhone couldn't even copy and paste. People still loved the phone and Apple made a ton of money and they moved forward with version two. So as presenters, we can use this idea of done is better than perfect. And here are three examples. And the first example is my lesson learned. In my early days of Toastmasters, I would need a long time to write a speech. I'd write it, edit it, write it, and edit it and be much later when I finally give the speech. One day, I decided to just go for it. I had a speech, it was about three quarters done. The audience is listening to me. They're all wondering how this is going to end and I'm wondering the same thing. Even with a bad ending, I got it done and was able to move forward. The second example, this is a real success story. Jeb Richard came here and gave us a speech about his trip to Machu Picchu in Peru. Turned out that Jeb hardly had any time to put the speech together because he was getting ready to move to Edmonton. We still got a chance to hear a really cool travel story and Jeb got that experience of putting together the speech in a hurry. He got a speech credit, he got the evaluation and all of that helped drive him forward to Edmonton. The third example, it's a real world example that's happening right now. Ann Casca is running some free workshops. These are pilot projects for her business. These workshops are not a hundred percent polished. The audience is going to get incredible value. She's going to, in exchange, they're going to give her feedback and she'll have that experience of running these workshops and it's going to drive her business forward. So to sum up this idea of done is better than perfect, I'm going to paraphrase a lesson that our friend Jocelyn Hasty taught us. Yes? Don't get mired in the shortcomings of your presentations, they'll just hold you back. Think about those moments of brilliance in your presentation. Your audience will get something out of it and this is what's going to drive you forward. So everybody say it with me. What is it that's better than perfect?
Done.
Done, Mr. Chairman.
In the interest of efficiency, I had something happen this past week and that was a request from somebody named Lana Asichak, who is right over here. A guest tonight, she's going to guest if you ties her for. And she wanted to do a speech and practice it at her home. Seems she's competing somewhere in the, so look out Russ. Anyway, she wants a chance to practice a speech. So I said, "Come to our meeting." Oh, she also said she'd like to become a member. I don't know if she brought any money with her tonight, but anyway, she said she'd like to become a member of MVP. And if we could squeeze her in, could she do the speech? But none of our speakers are sick or out of town, so we have a very full agenda. So what I would like to propose, in the event we can be really precise in our time later on, to maybe in the second half of the meeting after tabletops, if we have sufficient time, could we squeeze in Lana's speech for five to seven minutes? Everybody okay with that? Anybody want to volunteer to evaluate Lana? Second prize, but hey, she's the best. She's the best we've gotten. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like you to welcome our Toastmaster tonight, all the way from Newfoundland and Labrador back in Alberta, Leonard Quilty.
Newfoundland and Labrador, yeah, kind of like it.
Lots of water there.
Lots of water, we're surrounded by water. What's that?
Am I hydrated there?
Yeah, yeah, I did. You notice I'm feeling hydrated tonight because I haven't opened my bottle of water yet. So I'm conserving, conserving for sure.
Drink it tomorrow.
So today is World Water Day and I was just doing thirty seconds of research when I left school today. And I saw that there are 7.6 billion people in the world right now and 2.1 billion don't have access to clean potable water. So that's kind of scary really, a big concern. So the more we can do for conservation, absolutely, yeah, for sure. So it's my pleasure tonight to introduce the speakers. We have our formal speaking session of three speakers as you see in your agenda. And our first speaker is Dave Burns and just want to say a couple of words about Dave here. His title, as you see in your agenda, is Moon Shots. And Dave told me that this is named after President Kennedy's audacious prediction that America would put a man on the moon within ten years. You'll still remember that back, I believe, nineteen sixty, he said that. A moonshot is a goal so ridiculous or large, it requires a completely new way of thinking to achieve. It will require results, ten or one hundred times their current capacity. And Dave, with the completion of his speech tonight, he will have achieved his advanced communicator silver. Now I believe Russ Dantou is your evaluator, so I'll ask Russ to read the objectives for the speech.
Mr. Toastmaster, ladies and gentlemen. Dave is speaking from the Storytelling Advanced Manual, speech number five, Bringing History to Life. And his objectives this evening are to understand the purpose of a cellphone ringing during his speech. Oh, sorry. To understand the purpose of stories about historical events or people, to use the storytelling skills developed in the preceding projects to tell a story about a historical event or person. And Madam Timer, the timing is seven to nine minutes.
Okay, Dave Burns, Moon Shots, Moon Shots, Dave Burns.
So nineteen sixty-nine, when men first stepped on the moon, there was a young eight-year-old boy watching this event who suddenly became very obsessed with space and all the possibilities. And he was the son of two Greek immigrants, fairly new to America. And he ran up to his mom, he said, "Mom, when I grow up, I want to be an astronaut." His mother said, "That's very cute, Peter, but you're going to be a doctor." So Peter Diamandis made his first roadblock or speed bump in becoming an astronaut or traveling into space by family obligations. He was a good Greek boy. He believed in family and honoring his parents' wishes. So instead of going off and doing whatever he wanted, he decided he'd do both. He'd become a doctor and he'd become an astronaut somehow. And he'd make everybody happy, be true to himself and look after his parents. So in the nineteen eighties, Peter had finished an engineering degree as his pre-med and he was now at Harvard Medical School studying to be a doctor. Surgeon, I believe, was a great focus for him. But on the side, he had started a rocket company. And so between surgeries and practices and things like that, he'd be out on a phone and calling back into the office as the CEO of his rocket company and checking on how things were going and then working nights to keep this thing going, including winning a large contract with the US government while he was doing all this. So he managed to finish his medical degree even though he was very distracted. Basically, he was promising the dean that if he was passed and allowed to finish, he would never practice medicine. And he agreed to this because all he had to do was study to be a doctor to make his mom happy. So he got out there. Now around, we're getting into the late eighties and the early nineties and Peter had always dreamed about space and the obvious way to get there was through NASA. NASA for America and obviously Russia were leading the space race. So this had always been his path. But since the Challenger disaster, he'd watched the funding and just the general progress of NASA shrink and go backwards. And he started to really realize as this kept happening, NASA was never going to get him into space. So how would he achieve his dream? And that's where he came to a decision in nineteen ninety-two. NASA couldn't get him there, but private space travel was the way that he was going to launch himself into space one day. He tried to volunteer for NASA, got knocked back. He tried various different ways of moving himself up the ladder and then he decided he would have to help open up the space frontier away from government. Government was never going to get him there. So that's what he decided to do. So he started more companies. He started associations and things like that where people could come together to talk about space. But in nineteen ninety-four, a great deal changed for him. He was given a book on Charles Lindbergh and the Spirit of St. Louis. And it was a story of how Charles Lindbergh originally crossed all the way over from New York to Paris in one flight and basically changed aeronautics. Several years after that happened, flights started to happen more regularly and really commercial, international flights really opened up after Charles Lindbergh had achieved this. What you might not know about that whole situation was he kind of did it on a bet and he wasn't the only one to try. It was actually a competition by a French entrepreneur who put up ten thousand dollars. And this is back in nineteen nineteen, started, he completed the flight in nineteen twenty-seven. But ten thousand dollars on the line. He wasn't the first, the second, the third. He was around tenth, eleventh or twelfth person to actually try this, but he achieved it. And what was interesting about this whole situation was while ten thousand dollars was put up to the person or the team that could accomplish this, four hundred thousand dollars was actually spent trying to win ten thousand dollars. There were more than twenty teams working to try to win this prize, but it pushed everything forward, pushed the limits for everybody. Peter read this and the intention when he'd been given this book was actually just to inspire him to go get his pilot's license. But what had happened is he saw his way to inspire others and move others forward to open up that space frontier to private space travel. And in the column of the book, he'd written down X Prize. That was going to be the name of the prize that he was going to create to get private, the first private space flight up there successfully. It also had to land and then go back up there a second time to qualify. But he called it the X Prize for many reasons, but really what it came down to is the X represented who the hell is actually going to give me ten million dollars because he did not have ten million dollars. So he traveled around the US zigzagging across the US trying to talk people into giving him money for this prize. And he just couldn't get buy-in. Corporations didn't want to necessarily be tied to this in case something went wrong. Private backers, he just couldn't find enough people. He'd get some interest, but just he was chasing this and chasing this. So about two years later, he decided, "I need more press. I need more excitement about this." So without really any money whatsoever, he went ahead and announced the X Prize to the world. But what he was able to do was he was able to leverage some people that might not have had money, but they had influence. So he was able to go to NASA and convince the head of NASA to stand up on a stage with him and help announce this. He got Buzz Aldrin, the second man on the moon, and ten other astronauts to stand up there. And he launched it in St. Louis where Charles Lindbergh had taken off from originally with the Spirit of St. Louis. So now, the pressure was really on. People from corporations to people in their backyard started building rockets and he had to find ten million dollars. Now time went on and he still didn't have a lot of money. He got some businessmen to invest a little bit, but he's still sweating, sweating quite a lot. And then finally, he heard about two Texas business people, saw an article, an interview about them and they basically said they'd always wanted to go into space. So down to Texas he went and he managed to get a million dollars out of those two people by promising he'd get them into space someday. And after that, he had enough momentum. More people came in and only three years later, in two thousand and four, Spaceship One launched, came down, launched a week later and was the first private space vessel ever to go into space. Now again, while it was a ten million dollar prize, a hundred million dollars was spent by the teams in developing spaceships and private space flight. So again, he was able to move the technology forward by giving people the opportunity, not necessarily being the guy that came up with the rocket. Now after that, you might have known Richard Branson, Larry Page from Google, Jeff Bezos from Amazon, they're all involved in space flight, things like that. There's all sorts of investment going on. So he really achieved his goal. And what he did as well, with the success of that X Prize, he expanded it out to other areas. He's dealing with the water shortage in countries, that's a prize. He has actually got an X Prize right now to build a Star Trek tricorder. The thing that Dr. McCoy would go up, scan you. That's a real thing that teams are now competing to build. Also, he's got five teams are left in building a teaching app. Basically, how can you turn a secondhand Android phone, put an app on it that can teach any child in the world to deal with the shortages that we've got in the third world, let alone the first world, has plenty of teacher shortages as well. So what he's been able to do is inspire people to take those big scary goals. I like to call it a big hairy goal is what you need for a moonshot. He calls them moonshots and really, the people that are making a difference in the world are the people with crazy dreams and a lot of hard work behind them. are the people with crazy dreams and a lot of hard work behind them. Thank you.
Well, it's a timer to give us a minute there for evaluators. Okay, thank you. Our second speaker is Roger Sutherland. And Roger, over here, he's a past CTM under the old system. Roger left Toastmasters when he returned to the West Indies to, to live in nineteen ninety-three. Following retirement from his executive position in the tropics, he returned to Canada to be close to his family, who all live in Calgary. Having recently joined MVP, tonight he will give us a mirror glimpse into part of his life, also highlighting the impact of one piece of advice he received as a young man. Choices do make a difference. Fellow Toastma, okay, I'll ask before I bring Roger up, I'll ask Christina to read the objectives for the speech.
I'm using the advanced evaluation that we have for MVP on his icebreaker. Basically, Roger's willing to let us into him in the seat and I will make some comments on his delivery and content.
Roger Sutherland, a glimpse into me, a glimpse into me, Roger Sutherland.
Mr. Toastmaster, fellow Toastmasters, and honored guests, especially our distinguished area representative. Oh, camera's going off. Never, never burn your bridges behind you. Those were the words that my mother told me when I was a young man growing up. And they still ring clearly in my mind. Never burn a bridge behind you. Has anyone here ever burnt a bridge behind them? Here's one. Have you ever looked back and seen the smoke of regret billowing upwards? You know someone else who has burnt a bridge? Of course, I speak metaphorically and in the context mostly of careers and jobs, but not exclusively. But I have met people who have done just that, burnt the bridge behind them and regretted. And I'll always remember my mother's advice. And I'll explain a little bit later how that advice helped me in life. She died recently, by the way, right here in Calgary at the ripe old age of one hundred. Yes, one hundred. Anyway, I was born in the West Indies of mixed racial heritage. My father's ancestors came from the northernmost part of Scotland to the New World in the year seventeen ninety and established three plantations on one of the islands, growing mainly sugar. I also have West African heritage in me. And recently, through the, I wouldn't say magic, but the discovery of DNA testing, I learned that I've got a little bit of Ashkenazi Jew in me. But I'm not type twisted, not to worry. Anyway, my growing up years in the West Indies were just idyllic. I had so much fun. In the summer with my friends and my younger brother, we would roam the rainforest, eating wild honey, climbing trees, shooting birds. You name it, we did it. We'd roam the beaches, explore caves. We had such a ball. And I never took life seriously. Until I asked the beautiful Jeanette to marry me, and she said yes. Wow. And you know what she said to me? "Roger, do you realize you've asked me to marry you and you have no money?" She was right, because she worked in the bank where I had my account, so she knew everything. I couldn't afford the lavish five-hundred-guest wedding that her father gave her, but I did start to save. Can anybody guess what wedding gift I gave my wife? What was that? Actually, we laugh about it now. But it wasn't funny. Of course, I had no money. But I gave her a fancy wine-up clothesline, if you believe that. I've never lived it down, but then we, we joke about it. Yes, we, we joke about it. Anyway, we built up our careers after we got married, and we both did extremely well. Until the day I decided, you know what? Why don't we integrate to this vast and exciting country of Canada? So I negotiated my departure with my boss. I ran one of the subsidiaries of a private conglomerate down there. And he said to me, "Roger, I really admire your courage for doing what you're doing. Fancy leaving to go to Canada without a job." On reflection, I think it was born na, 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 na viaté, and it was courage, certainly. But I did negotiate my departure. I gave them enough time to replace me. They even suggested, "Roger, why don't you go to Canada, settle your family, and come back and work for six more months?" They would have made it financially attractive, but that didn't work out. And so I left with a very solid reputation. But I took my three young kids and their nanny, and we set off on this new adventure in this wonderful country. Jeanette settled seamlessly into her banking career. But at first, I struggled. Leaving familiarity behind and social and business contacts, it was a real challenge to my innermost fortitude and especially my self-esteem. But I prevailed, and I made a good life for myself in this country. And now to the crux of my little story, it's just a glimpse into me. Jeanette and I had just paid off our mortgage on our wood-buying home, and we decided, you know what? Let's go and look at show homes. So we were out one weekend looking at new show homes. And I walked back in the house, I think it was a Saturday, and there was this phone call. It came from my past chairman. He was now chairman of the group. He said, "Roger, would you consider coming back to the group and helping us with some of our problems?" Wow, so unexpected. To cut a long story short, a director flew to Calgary. We had discussions. And once negotiations were completed, in a year's time, Jeanette sold our home, bought a three-bedroom condo for our kids, and returned to the West Indies. And we had a fantastic time. Of course, we had challenges. But we expanded our horizons, learned new skills, and went down avenues of opportunity which would never have been open to me had I burnt that bridge. It was just absolutely wonderful. And in the end, we decided, you know what? Let's go back and join our growing family in Canada. And once again, we left a very enviable lifestyle behind. My friends challenged me, "Why would you do that?" And came back to Canada. Jeanette and I love to travel. We've been all over the world, some countries multiple times, on all the continents except Antarctica. I play tennis, and I did play yesterday, actually, and I did hydrate myself, probably. So we play, I play tennis, I love to read, I love international affairs, and I love my family, my three kids and now six grandkids. Incredible time with them. And what I can look back and see, all the bridges that I have crossed in life are totally intact today with solid and enduring relationships with people in many parts of the world. And I have to say, "Thank you, mommy." Mr. Toastmaster.
Well, that's a timer to give us a minute for the evaluation, please. Okay, that's the minute, thank you. All right, our third speaker tonight is Joanne Smith. And Joanne, just a, a brief note about Joanne. Joanne dreaded retirement until last April, when something happened to change her outlook. So I'll ask Joanne's evaluator, Anthony Sanney, to read the objectives for the speech.
Thank you, Mr. Toastmaster. Joanne's speech is from Project Four.
Yeah.
How to save. And the objectives are: to select the right words and sentence structure to communicate your ideas clearly, accurately, and vividly; to use rhetorical devices to enhance and emphasize ideas; to eliminate jargon and unnecessary words; to use correct grammar. Timing is five to seven minutes.
Okay, thank you. Our third speaker, Joanne Smith, Old Gold. Old Gold, Joanne Smith.
Your vision of retirement might be as simple as playing with your grandchildren, going on long trips around the world, or simply sleeping in. My vision of retirement was not so positive. When my grandmother retired, I went to her home. And she was living in a retirement home. The walls were peeling, white paint. The room smelled like antiseptic. And the one window was up so high and was so tiny that it looked more like a ventilation shaft than something to enjoy. I vowed I would not retire like that. When my husband asked, "Joanne, when do you, when are you intending on retiring?" I replied like every city of Calgary employee would. "I love my job, I never want to retire." "When you turn sixty-five, I'll be the same age as my father when he died. I want to live my retirement and enjoy it with you." I know I should have been thinking, "What a sweet husband I have." But that voice in the back of my mind was going, "Twenty-four hours a day? Seven days a week? Hardly any money? Alone with my bored husband? Help me!" Fellow Toastmasters and honored guests, I got help. Believe it or not, one day at a garage sale, help arrived in the form of a vintage Mix Master mixer and its matching milkshake maker. The one item my husband picked out, he looked over at the seller and said, "What do you want for the mixers?" "Twenty-five dollars." "I'll give you twenty." Sold! As we're walking out of the garage sale, I looked at him and said, "Why did you buy those? I think I can sell them at a profit." A week later, he had sixty dollars in his hand from selling the two mixers. It was the first time that we had turned old into gold. And we've been doing it ever since. Six months ago, he was covering all his weekly expenses. Two months ago, he started covering my weekly expenses as well. But it really isn't about the money. We get to spend time together, enjoying each other's company, going to all kinds of different sales. We spend a lot of time researching all the different things that we're finding. And we are meeting some incredible people. And to top it off, my husband has helped me see that there is a possibility of filling all that time when you retire with all that money that you just don't have. He helped me figure out that I might actually get to enjoy my passion with him. Now, if you think about it, most of you are probably way too young to be thinking about retirement. But you might be like me, your spouse might be really old. So thinking about retirement is important. My husband, he has spent a lot of time alone. And I'd like to see that others don't suffer the problems that you get by having that bored spouse. Use your passions. When my grandmother retired, the first thing she decided to do was go back to work casually. But with the money she earned, she traveled around the world and put her foot into every ocean and sea there was. She found her passion and found a way to continue to enjoy it in her retirement. Do I have any golfers in the room? Wonderful. My ex-boss volunteers at a golf course. And in return, he gets his golf fees paid. Any quilters? Wow, none? Okay. I have a coworker. When she retired, she bought a big machine, and she finishes off people's quilts for them. So she also gets to meet all these other people that have the same passion she does. It's not costing any of them very much money, but it is making them absolutely happy in their retirement. They are enjoying what they're doing. My old gold is finding old things and reselling it and making a little bit of cash on the side. Other people's old gold, maybe even yours, is to find what your passion is and find a way to afford it. So I'll ask you, think about how you can turn your old into gold. That's your toastmaster.
I have to say, Joanne, when you ask for hands for, "Who are quilters in here?", I almost put out my hand. Quilty? I was that close. I was that close.
I'll remember that.
I was at a picnic at the school one time, and this lady came up to me, she said, "I'm a quilter." I said, and she saw my name, and heard "quilty", she said, "I'm a quilter." I said, "Wow." Of course, I, I was totally clueless at the time. I, I said, "Wow," I said, "I'm quilty." That's close. I just, I just went right over my head that she was a quilt maker. So, okay, at this time, I'd like to call for a break. So how much time are we looking at for the break?
One minute.
One minute for the break? Oh, okay, yeah, yeah. Yeah, before we call the break, I'll give that one minute, yeah.
We'll have a break for seven minutes.
Seven minutes, okay.
Enough time for a glass of water and a bathroom break.
Yeah, okay, I'll call Mark to do that officially. You just did, okay.
At ease, everyone.
At ease, everyone. Yes?
Hi, Nelson. Um, I thought I might want to have that girl go to the office and then we don't know how much time you have.
No, you do that.
You think this is it? Well, then, how...
I'll get you.
You just squish it, okay.
Did you want me to introduce the Table Topics Master? No?
Welcome back, everybody. We now have a challenge. We need to make tracks, we need to hustle, Mr. Dantou.
Thank you. Let me move slowly, sorry.
We're going to have our Table Topics session next. No, we're not. We're gonna have club business.
Yeah, we're gonna have...
Oh, good.
Do we need that tonight?
Yeah, we got two points of business that we need to...
You're gonna get up here now, John, and be quick about this? Wonderful, thank you. Please welcome John McDonald, President of English Tea. He's gonna be like Donald Trump tonight. He's gonna fire somebody, appoint somebody, and he's gonna tweet about it.
Tweet about it?
That's what presidents do.
Yeah, my Twitter account is pretty dry, so... A couple of points of business. We have our area director in, and she has challenged me to fill out DCP progress. We are doing very well with everything announced except for educational awards, which means... We got a couple in there, but we're looking for CC awards.
Okay, did I not agree to do one?
Uh, yes, maybe?
Just an issue, just an issue if I go in and look at the site, I'm guessing, so I'm just asking what your goals are.
Yeah. Well, our goals are ten out of ten, so...
Yeah.
Russ, Joanne...
I've got one more speech.
Jocelyn.
Jocelyn.
I've got two CC manuals only.
But you can't...
You can.
Yeah, you can't submit two. Number four is who?
Abraham.
Abraham? Sold.
Nice, that's two points right there, that's nice.
Same thing for CLs.
Yeah, you can have one of mine.
Joanne?
JC, Leonard, Jocelyn, Joanne.
We need two, so JC, Joanne, let's say.
Well, Leonard doesn't have another club, so maybe...
Oh, Leonard? No, no, I do, no, I could use a big rock. Okay. ACB, ACS, ACG. I got an ACS. One more? Dave? Dave?
Who was what ACS just now?
Dave?
Hey, Dave.
Hey, Dave.
Do you need another ACS?
I think we got her. ACB. One more, one more. Sold. Thank you. Number two is our guest, Gail Shirley is here today. And she has a wish list that she's going around to different clubs to talk about donations to help support the hospitality suite at the upcoming convention. She has a wish list of small paper plates, paper napkins, plastic wine glasses, solo beverage cups, veggie trays, manches, strawberries, grapes, or cash donations. And so, I would like to ask Gail if you, for a couple of moments, sorry, Gail, and our club can have a quick discussion?
Close the door anyway, out?
Yeah, sorry. Not rudely.
Use your hat, use your cup.
Other guests probably as well. Yes, please.
I'm told that the business meeting is adjourned and will now resume our regular agenda. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome your Table Topics Master tonight. Who is that Table Topics Master? That's Susan Kramer. Please welcome Susan.
We are going to do something slightly different tonight because we need a little shakeup. So what I have in mind is, instead of our traditional, "I'm going to read you a question", you're going to come up and dig something out of my bag. You're going to pretend that we are in the year 4040. You have never seen this item before. You have no idea what it's for, but you are the resident expert on everything out of the year 2018. You've got to make up a story that is gonna convince your audience that you really do know what this item is.
Is that 4040 B.C. or in the...
Future. We're going into the future. Our Table Topics evaluator this evening is Val, and Val has been asked to look very specifically for three things. It needs to be original, your response. So if you pull something out of here and it's an everyday item that we're familiar with in 2018 and you tell us exactly what it is and how it's used, I want imagination and originality. You've never seen it before, you have no idea what it's for. Humor, you've got to inject a little bit of humor. And thirdly, it needs to be a proper speech. I want to see an opening, a body, and a close. She's got a chart, she's gonna be checking, and she's counting points, and it'll be part of the feedback. Who would like to come first to my little bag of goodness? Hmm. Richard! Come on up, buddy. You're the next contestant. Hey, Ray, give me a second.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, we were doing some digging, prepping for the new skyscraper that will be used to assist getting into orbit. And after we dug down several thousand feet, we found this. Now, we've determined that it's approximately in the thousands of years old. And it is a strange thing in that it doesn't seem to end. Now, this material, it does feel kind of furry. So it's my belief, as the resident expert on things from 20... the 2000 millennial, that this used to be an animal. Now, the reason that I say that is it's got a furry covering. And animals that we know about in the history books had fur. Now, I've seen examples of this in the past, except they weren't this long. Like, I've heard of ones that were nine meters, but they were a lot thicker. And they would eat things. Now, I can't imagine something like this eating anything. So with that, I'm gonna have to make an educated guess that this is a snake. So ladies and gentlemen, this will go into the record books as the snake from the second millennial. Ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, are you gonna come next, Ray?
This has presented the world of archaeology with quite a serious challenge. It's got a petroleum kind of base on the outside that has pretty well deteriorated to the point that it's quite crusty. And we were able to use some surgical instrumentation and some X-rays and sonar to investigate the interior of it. And we see that there's some metal in some most unusual configurations. And we have similar items from the 23rd century, but since we've been so using an organic way of computation, it's very difficult. But we think that it probably is a form of computer that comes from that, an extremely elementary form of computer. It looks like it uses binary code. And binary code hasn't been used for 1,800 years. And so we suspect that this has some method of calculating possibly related to the abacus. And so we would, we propose that this is a calculating device. And that's what we would call it in the history books.
Next? Okay, one more, that's it, we're done. Next?
It has to be a female.
Has to be a female?
She's had two males.
Hmm, Jocelyn.
We've got three female guys.
Oh, she's giving me one.
You never sit quietly.
You should have fun with that one.
This particular item is frightening me a little. It has some likenesses on it.
I believe of the witches from Salem. I think it is a warning device. Telling us to avoid this person at all costs. Warning us of the things that could happen to us if we got too close. I believe this person in the history books was burned at the stake. The reason she was burned at the stake was because she was disloyal to her friends and she disturbed them while they were sitting quietly in their little corner behaving themselves. Therefore, this item with some strange symbol on the back is a warning signal to avoid this person at all costs.
Thank you, I think, okay. Is I introduce now our Table Topics Master? Our Table Topics evaluator, Val, are you ready?
Yes.
Excellent, please join me in welcoming Val Erickson.
Little did you all know that this was a contest. It was a contest between the three speakers. I evaluated based on originality, humor, open body, and conclusion. What I found was that two of the speakers were a little long in their description at the beginning, so a little long to get into the opening. The first two speakers, Richard and Ray, both of you had good openings and great description of what you had, but neither of you gave your item a name, unlike Jocelyn, who named her item right away. And I think that was more effective as an audience member to get right to the point quicker. I would have liked to have seen that you get to the point a little quicker, both of you guys. But you had great humor, everyone had great humor, and originality, and being put on the spot. There's a reason I volunteered myself to be Table Topics evaluator. Because I'm terrified of Table Topics. And so the fact that you could stick your hand right in there and pull out and just come up with anything was just amazing to me. The openings, like I said, were a little long. I found the bodies really informative, actually. I found your descriptions really, really sound. And your conclusions, that's what I was mostly looking for before I realized I was going to have this beautiful form to fill out. I was going to focus on conclusions. I find that to be a fairly common weak spot in most people's Table Topics. But I did notice that all three of you had good wrap-ups, good summary. They were concise, and it was efficient, and it really wrapped it up nicely. But the winner of today's Table Topics of the Year 4040 device was Jocelyn.
Thank you, Madam Table Topics evaluator. Russ, could you move this over there for me, please? We are now going to have... Thanks, I'll shake your hand later. Our guest Lana is gonna give us a speech now. And who's evaluating? Susan's evaluating?
Yeah.
Please welcome Lana Aschuck. Get up and move, get up and move, Lana Aschuck.
I know all of you in this room eat every day, sleep every day, and most of you work every day. But did you know that our body is made to move every day? Lana, it's my grade-three teacher yelling, "Wake up!" That's horrifying at eight years old. Lana, eight years later, all of my grade-11 teachers keep yelling, "Wake up! Pay attention!" Sitting all day is extremely hard. It zaps my energy, especially when the teachers are born. How can I stay awake? Fellow Toastmasters and guests, which is worse? Or sitting for long periods of time causes as many health issues today as smoking worldwide because of all the damage that's happening due to lack of movement? Do we want to be couch potatoes? Or do we want to move our way to health? Case in point. Imagine parking your car for a year without moving it. The rain and snow beating down on it. What would happen to the car? It would rust. You go to start it, chug, chug, chug. The same is true when we sit excessively. I don't know about you, but I feel like this, like I'm 100 years old instead of 50. The antidote? Get up and move. The problem is that many people associate moving with exercising. And how many of you find exercising hard? Be honest. Not fun. For many, exercising equals sweat, blood, and tears. Exercising is misery. No pain, no gain. I'd like to shift that to no pain, lots of gain, with three stories that exemplify moving more and sitting less. It will be painless. In grade 11, my life changed with the 20-minute workout video. I was moving my body to music. What an endorphin rush! It was so fun and energizing. Mentally, physically, I felt incredible. Mentally, physically, I felt incredible. I'd even stayed awake in my classes after that. I found my life purpose. I said to my mom, "Mom, I'm going to become an aerobics instructor." Her response? "Really? Is there a career in that?" I have now been in the fitness industry for 30 years. No pain, lots of gain. Oh, oh. Mom, are you okay? Oh Lana, my hips, my knees, they really hurt. The Mexican pills I bought to help, they're not helping. What should I do? Mom, just start moving more, walking every day, it'll really help your body. I also started training her with movement and strength training on Skype. Mom, sit, stand, quick feet, balance on one leg. After a few months, she underwent an amazing transformation. Mom, you're moving so much better. Looks like you've lost some weight. You think so, Lana? I feel so much better. This movement has really helped with my aches and pains. That was five years ago. I trained her twice a week on Skype. It's our bonding time. It has really connected us. We are closer today than we have ever been. In fact, I saw her earlier today. No pain, lots of gain. I wish you could have seen Eddie in the hallways at junior high, the transformation he went through. He was the shortest kid. The girls thought he was so cute, and the boys, they beat him, they bullied him. "Hey, shrimp." His friend Richard says to him one day, "Eddie, have you thought about weightlifting to build your body?" Good idea. New year, new school, Eddie joins a weightlifting club. He starts lifting every day. He becomes hooked. It's as part of his life, like eating and brushing his teeth. He builds his pecs, his biceps, his triceps. He loves the results and the compliments. "Wow, Eddie, you're looking good." Eddie walks the hallway with confidence. No pain, lots of gain. I shared three stories of people who gained healthier, happier lives with movement. With movement, I gained mental, physical energy. I found my life purpose. With movement, my mom gained less stiffness in her body, and she lost weight. With movement, Eddie gained confidence. Fellow Toastmasters, I'm asking you kindly, what are you waiting for? Say it with me. Get up and move. Thank you.
Thank you, Lana. Do you think we should consider her as a member? If you can all take a minute or two to make comments for Lana, in addition to her evaluation, I'm sure she'd appreciate that. In the interest of movement, could the general evaluators start moving towards the phrase "move"? Slowly at first, of course. We're only two minutes behind schedule, everybody, so we worked that out. So thank you for everybody's contribution. Please welcome the general evaluator tonight, Jan Thorndtson.
My first task as general evaluator is actually going to be to call upon the evaluation of our speakers. And our first evaluator tonight is Russ Dantou. Russ, can you please give us the evaluation for Dave?
Mr. General E evaluator, ladies and gentlemen, and especially you, Dave. Dave, that is my favorite speech I've heard from you. I thought you really upped your game tonight. Absolutely. I think we should all stand up and applaud. We were going to do that every time somebody achieves something, and it's just achieved as a C figure. What I liked right away was your title, Moonshots. It intrigued me, and I liked the way you had Leonard introduce it so we knew exactly what it was. So you had already told us a little bit about your speech right with your title and the introduction. I thought that was great. You had a fabulous story to start with humor, and the only thing I would say with that, though, because you're talking 1969, eight-year-old boy, I heard Peter, I didn't hear the last name, so I actually Googled it, it was Diamondus, is that it? Yes. Did you say that?
I didn't, I forgot it.
You didn't? Okay, all right, because I thought maybe it was just my hearing. But I thought that was the opportunity, that discussion with the mum and the son, where you really could have had some vocal variety, because one of the questions was, did you have good vocal variety? You had great vocal variety throughout your speech, but through the dialogue there, you could have really upped the vocal variety with the son and the mum. And I'm reaching for stuff to give you advice on, because I thought it was an awesome speech and well done tonight. I saw your notes when you came up, and I put notes down on the negative side of my page with a question mark, but I moved it to the positive side, because you had so many stats and years to remember, I think it was important that you had the notes there. And I thought you used them very well, and it was a lesson for us that it's okay to use notes when we've got that many stats and years, dates, that are important to your speech. So that was well done. You were extremely well-prepared, you had really good energy, you were enjoying giving the speech tonight, you had this big smile throughout, which was great. And there was two other little things I thought maybe distracted a bit, and I'm a victim of doing this as well, the hand clashing a little bit and coming back here in between gestures. So something to watch of. It didn't seem to distract me that much, but I noticed it, and I was looking for something to give you back. The other thing I think that maybe could have added to tonight would maybe be a prop, a picture of this gentleman, or of a rocket, or something like that. But, and I liked that you mentioned the BHAGs, Big Hairy Audacious Goals, and it was just a motivational speech. It was something new that I didn't know a lot about, and I thought you told it extremely well. So thank you very much, and congratulations.
And our next evaluator is Christina Cruz, evaluating Roger.
Fellow Toastmasters and Roger, what a beautiful way for you to join us at MVP. A glimpse into me, I think you are very comfortable up here. You started with a strong voice, you were very confident in front of the crowd, and you were very confident in your story. And I think we saw three people who were good at that tonight, but there are people who try to present and then check their notes or they get lost, but you knew your story, you were very well-prepared, and natural and relaxed throughout. Some comment about the camera, and then you really went into it. I loved how much you shared with us about you. They pointed the icebreaker as for us to get to know somebody. It was in your introduction, which was an awesome example about what we should all be doing for our Toastmaster. I love that. You told us about Janet, you told us about your careers, you told us about your children, you started with a quote from your mother, your travels, what you did, how you came back to Calgary. There was a lot of information that we got to find out about you that we didn't know yet, and it's a lot easier to be part of the club with that in there. I love your voice, you have a very beautiful pace. It was easy to understand, and you showed great excitement. Life has been great to you, and you want to share that with us. Not just because it's your story, but all of us can learn to be that excited and enthusiastic about life. So you really had, right from your friendly smile, it was really inviting to get to know you, although none of us were actually responding in conversation. The beginning was never burn your bridges behind you, and I love the expression, "smoke of regret." And then you proved how you never had any bridges burnt. And I think that was a beautiful lesson for all of us. You had some great expressions, "my beautiful Janet." I mean, two words, and tells us so much about your relationship and who you are as a person. Vast and exciting Canada, that's for somebody who's coming here, and we sit here and think about just home. A solid reputation. So you were leaving something really good, but you were coming to Canada with your children and your nanny. Leaving familiarity behind and enviable lifestyle. There was all these great things in your life, and yet you were willing to risk and take new opportunities. You use a center stage, and you had such natural movement. I don't remember your hands being anything but, they were not distracting at all, and just sort of included your personality and your persona in the story. It showed us how relaxed you are in front of the group, and I think that's a very comforting thing for the audience to feel when they're listening to. You started with a few comments about the camera, and I, this is obvious, start strong. Never burn your bridges. That's what my mother told me. How many of you have heard something like that? So to just wait, find your spot, and start strong. And some of your movements, you had two countries, so you could have used the stage to say, "what's happening in Canada," or "when I came, when I started," and what was happening. So then you could use the stage movement back and forth, rather than just a sort of aimless pacing, "when I'm ready." What I really might have suggested, oh, there was one other thing I loved, you talked about your mother. And you just sort of gave us little tidbits about who you are and the relationship to your family. What if your title had been, you ended with, "thank you, mummy," I love that, and "I kept my bridges intact." What if your title had been Bridges Intact, instead of A Glimpse Into Me? I think it would have drawn us in better at the beginning. Beautiful speech, beautifully prepared and organized. Welcome to MVP, Roger.
And our evaluator for our third speaker, Joanne, is Anthony.
Fellow Toastmasters, Madam Mayor, Director, and especially Joanne, thank you for giving your speech this evening. Thank you for inspiring those of us that are close to retirement, far from it, married to somebody that's close to it, thinking about it someday, everybody. This is kind of something that's very close to my heart, which is rhetorical devices. I've studied this as a hobby and even in speaking, so I'm really excited to evaluate what you've done here. I want to talk about what you did well, and then just how you could do it better. This is basically what this is going to look like. There's something called three-dimensional description. When you talked about when you walked into your mother's retirement home, you said there was white peeling paint. First of all, peeling paint is nice, PP, it's cool, but you said white peeling. So you painted a picture of white peeling paint, a visual, then you said it smelled of antiseptic, so you gave us a smell side, and then you said the windows were so high it gave you a certain feeling. So you gave a sight, smell, and a physical sensation with three short sentences. That's what rhetorical devices help us to do, is grammatical use of language, and you nailed that. So thank you for giving me that gift. Alliteration, you said mixed master, matching something maker. I noticed that, a lot of Ms. in there, I like that. The very title is Old Into Gold, which is a rhyme, which you'll remember, old into gold, so very well done. There was another one you had, which was Fill All That Time With All That Money. So there was a bounce to it that kind of just made it stick, and that was very effective. Now let's talk about what you could do to make it even better. There were a few phrases you used that I figured with more rehearsal you'd clean them up. You said problems that you get. It just seemed awkward, because the rest of the speech sounded so nice, problems that you get just kind of sounded discordant to me. Is there a better way to say that, I wonder? Yes, there is.
Let me tell you.
And then you said, somebody in your family, sorry, I was listening to the drama so much, I can't remember who it was, you said, "put her foot into every ocean." When you think put your foot into, the mind thinks of in your mouth. Did anybody else feel that? I did, maybe it makes me crazy. But when I hear put your foot into, it's not a very nice picture it puts. So it might be to say dipped her toes in the most beautiful blue oceans, you know? Something a little bit more picturesque. And then there was another opportunity where you said, you said absolutely happy. I, this is an advanced club, that's lazy. What does absolutely happy mean? So what I suggest is elaborate on what happy could be. So was she happy? Was she fulfilled? Was she inspired? Was she, you know, satiated, whatever it is? Don't just say absolutely happy, it doesn't mean anything, those words put together. And then, to close it off, as my time runs out, I challenge you to ask yourself this question. What is your speech really about? I think it's about not being afraid of retirement, maybe retirement not being the end. I suggest that if you figure out what this speech is really about, you could benefit from crafting one solid phrase that will capture that. And what came to my mind was what LBJ, Lyndon B. Johnson, President of the United States back then, said. His whole policy was around education. So he said, "Poverty must not be a barrier to education, and education must provide an escape from poverty." So could you say something like, "The end of life is not to retire, and retirement is not the end of life"? Something along those lines to make that speech come together. But overall, as you can see, a lot of beautiful material here. I encourage you to work on this a little bit more, tacking it up, and I look forward to hearing the next inspiration of it, Mr.
Who is our evaluator for that? Oh, Susan.
Lana, you did so many things fantastic tonight, and I really want to make sure that I get as many of the improvement things in as I can. But truly, I loved your speech, I loved your story development, the fact that you used triad with your stories, the three points, which are always so magical for Toastmasters and for speeches. I liked your use of dialogue, and I really enjoyed your language. So I'm going to leave those things aside, and instead of elaborate on how wonderful they were, I'm going to dive right into where I think you need improvement. And it's all around your body and how you're using the stage. When you compete, Russ can probably be better at this than I am in the dimensions, but whether it's your about 10 feet this way, and is it 24 this way? Roughly. So it's a big stage, and I found that most of your movements were restricted to here, and I think the furthest you came was here. And you can see there was a favor to this side of the room as opposed to the other side of the room. And when you were here, it was only a very brief, brief time when you were in this spot. You need to plan your staging a little bit better so that as you're telling your stories, you pick a spot where that story is told. And if you ever reference that story again in your speech, you're either pointing to that spot or returning to that spot when you're doing it. So I noticed when you concluded, you told one of the stories over there, but when you concluded and moved along the stage with your conclusion, you actually concluded with the story having been told here, when it wasn't, it was there. So it was incongruent. I think that's the right way to use that word. I found your opening gestures, which is your first impression, and you only have seven seconds to make that first impression, were a little bit too melodramatic for me. So, but that's me, and I don't know how the rest of the room felt, but I felt that they were a little bit melodramatic, so maybe tone them down a little bit. They need to be big gestures, because it's going to be a big room, but just be careful that you're not too melodramatic. The other thing I found with your walking gesture, you were often like this, and you'd do about four steps, and it was more about your arms. Just walk naturally, the way that we normally walk. Because you're not jogging and running, and that, to me, signified more jogging and running than it did just actually moving. In your conclusion, you recapped two stories, not three, and you told three. And I think the one that was missing was the aerobics.
Oh, I did recap, you know. I did recap, you know, I said, "I gained confidence," or in the physical and mental thing, "my mom gained less stiffness," and then my, and then Eddie gained confidence.
So maybe somehow tie the aerobics back into that? Maybe by saying, by discovering through aerobics my career path, I have, you know, something that sort of ties it back, because what stuck out in my mind was the aerobics and the discovery of your career path. So that, to me, was missing in the conclusion, so I just write over, just, I didn't even hear it. But I'm going to conclude by telling you, you were recorded tonight. Be nice to Richard, make sure he's got your email address, and you'll be able to see yourself perform this speech, and maybe you'll see the same things I did, and you'll want to make some adjustments. But overall, that was a fantastic speech. I think you're going to rock it in area, and I wish you well in the upcoming contest. But overall, that was a fantastic speech. I think you're going to rocket an area, and I wish you well in the upcoming contest.
For my next quick, I am going to actually call upon our merian, which is out of order according to the agenda, but at this time, we're not.
Thank you, Mr. J. I have some phrases you are going to tell me who said what. As far as I'm the odds, I agree. I think that might be because we're in advanced, but we're maybe just here. Congratulations, Abraham Joseph Leonard and Roger for using hydrated. Thank you. It wasn't a waste of me writing it up there. Here are the phrases. Who said, "Drink beer and said..." I agree. Water causes rust. Done is better than perfect. This is an interesting one. 7.6 people and 2.1 do not have water. Immediately, I in my head, 30%, taking a look left and right, one of you is not drinking. Who gave us that pass? I added the last word. So add when you give a stat like that, put it into real terms. Because the numbers just don't count. That is three people. Two are getting water and one's not in their own, turn the tap off and brush teeth. Who said that? I listen to a lot of speeches. I, I caught repeating phrases during table topics. Richard likes the word now. Ray likes the word ah. And Jossel likes the words I.
Madam Timer, can we have a timers report, please?
We started right on time at seven o'clock. We had opening remarks by Saturday morning, 11:45. 15 minutes, 42 seconds, the winner's choice, 302. Questions, or voluntary introductions, mine, it was a wire, and Leonard introduction to the speaker day's speech, was nine minutes, 42 seconds. Leonard's seat, or, or, pardon, Leonard's seat, was six minutes, 18 seconds. And Joanne's seat, was six minutes, 16 seconds. I'm not sure how long the recording was, but it wasn't very long. We did, we did, uh, being a minute, we re-keeping the minute at seven minutes, 7. Our business meeting was 11 minutes and 6 seconds. Kev's evaluated, or was it a minute, or, or, or two, so the intro was 1:48. Richard's was 1:28, Ray's was 1:53, Jossel's was 1:16, and then the evaluation was 1:55. Russ's evaluation of the first 30 minutes, 42 seconds. Christina's was over at 3:40, Anthony's was over at 3:55. And Christina's over there, and it was 1:42, and I did 75. Our 10th speaker was 6:44, and the evaluation was 71.
I am going to attempt to be uncharacteristically brief with my general evaluation. Anybody that's ever seen me do this before knows I can really build my time. Anyway. Word of the day was hydrated. I thought that was an interesting word of the day for water day. The one thing I would suggest with a word of the day is use the, pardon, use the root word, which would be hydrate, because that gives us the opportunity to use hydrated, hydration, hydrating. And have a little more fun with the word of the day. Mark, your question of the day. If you want a single sentence answer, don't ask a table topic's question. And if you ask a question related to the word of the day, then everybody gets to use it. Gregoray, dealer's choice, done is better than perfect. That was well-prepared. You did a wonderful job presenting what you're doing. But done is better than perfect, and this relates to something that I noticed throughout the meeting. Done is better than perfect only if when you have that done better than perfect thing, it is a minimum viable product. Which means, it might have some rough edges, but it is complete. Okay? Which means you understand specifically what you're doing with it, you have that conclusion in mind. Our toastmaster, Leonard Quilty, your prepared opening remarks tied to theme wonderfully, and you had nice little introductions for everybody, and it was nice that they were brief because we actually fit in another speaker into what was a full agenda. This is something that I question, Mr. Corky. We added a speaker to a full agenda. We managed to get by so far. You were, Mr. Sutherland, your, your introduction, Mr. Sutherland, I'm still talking to Leonard here. And you gave us a bit about Roger, just a bit, which is good because it was an icebreaker. And an icebreaker gets a minimal introduction, because it is introduction. The intro for Joanne, you actually succinctly, very, very succinctly, created curiosity about her speech. I liked that. We didn't actually announce the beginning of the break, it just kind of wandered into it, and people were wondering, but we're all still sitting. I know you were. The business meeting, we had a bit of confusion as to whether we were doing it or not, we lost some time over that. So coordinating what's going to happen with business meeting ahead of time is very important. I'm not going to evaluate the table topic speeches per se, because that was done by Val. Val, as the table topic evaluator, you went straight into the speakers. You did not evaluate Susan. Well, thank you for pointing that out to me. But as, as the table topics evaluator, you're evaluating that, so it's like...
It is some of us. We have a discussion of rules on the line, I don't know if everybody knows that or not, it's in our website, and if you're ever curious, just go look at that.
And we were, I, I will very briefly talk about Susan as the table topic master. You did an interesting shift to table topics because you had items to talk about. You gave us specific instructions regarding the scenario and the criteria you wanted people to use in their table topics. You did the classic, you wanted to see an opening of body and conclusion, but did anybody explain why we do table topics? We have a couple of guests and a very new member. You know, and interestingly, when you're evaluating, you're essentially doing a table talks. And you did it very well, so don't be afraid of table topics. It is where you will really grow as a speaker. Our evaluators tonight, Russ, thank you for recognizing right off that that was Dave's best speech we've seen yet, and I agree. Calling for innovation, because you recognized that he had made that, achieved that goal, was important. Thank you for doing that, and it also gave me the chance to run back here and grab my notes, because everybody's standing. Christina, you very eloquently covered the positives before making it to some suggestions. And when you evaluate, you do it with such, such care. It really makes me proud to call you a friend. Anthony, he covered the specific objectives for the speech he was evaluating. Did it thoroughly, used, talking about every one of those objectives as a teaching point. I thought that was very effective. And what the speech was about, yes. That goes to figuring out what you're talking about, because when you understand that, it gives you that opportunity to craft a conclusion that really makes a speech effective. And really, that's what we're trying to do here. We're trying to speak effectively. Motivationally, inspiringly, wonderful, great. Have a purpose. Hit that purpose, or you're leaving your audience in a dangerous mental state. Seriously, I'm not kidding. Susan, you evaluated Lana, and you covered body language mostly, and strengthening the conclusion again. And these are two things that are really pets of mine, because body language is actually highly overrated. Okay? We have all seen a fellow in a wheelchair do contest-winning speeches. One of the most important speakers in the world died last week, Stephen Hawking. His ideas outweighed any body language ever could have come up. So, it is an important thing, but it is the background to your real ideas. Back over to Mark.
Thank you, Ben. A man who at any time can stand up and speak about anything. We can get the zen of motorcycle maintenance from this man anytime we want. Thank you, Ben. And thank you all, to all the presenters tonight. And I have a few more people to call upon. John McDonald, you have somebody to single out.
Yes. Please do, from here?
Sure.
Stand up, though. What this season has really shown me is that MVP, number one, hosts amazing contests. That MVP contestants do amazing work. And that the MVP volunteers and team, not only the MVP people, but the, the people that assist us with our contests, they're all around me, they are amazing. As I go through the different clubs and see what's happening, I truly appreciate all of the efforts that people here at MVP have, have, have done. So my members doing it right is the club people, the participants competing, and sharing your time to help the, to help the, I was going to say competitiveness again, I have that word in my head. The new Johnism, it's in my, it's in my head, but done very well.
Thank you, John. Please rise again, John, Mr. Quizmaster.
Christina's already done that role, so...
And we're pressed for time.
Well, I know we're pressed for time, but it says Quizmaster here, so somebody had to be.
Good job.
The diographer, do you have anything to report? Thank you.
Anything to report, Richard?
So you're on the agenda, I had to call you. I'd like now to call on our guests for their comments, feedback, whatever they might have for us. And I think we should start over here with Lana, then Gail, and then Lynn.
Thank you for having me. I emailed Mark, because when I did the contest, like, nobody gave me feedback. So I just, I was like, oh, I don't know, I didn't feel, I feel like there's always room for improvement, so thank you for... I did actually think, he said that we have no room for you, so I actually wasn't expecting to do it. So thank you for fitting me in and allowing me that, so I really appreciate that. Yeah, I told him I wanted to join, but I, I know you have to vote in or something, so...
Well, first you sign the form and then give me money, I'll take care of it. Thank you for coming.
As always, when I come to an MVP meeting, I learn tons. I've mentioned single members who have mentored and helped the High River Club as we got to our feet and got going in the last couple of years. But overall, I'd say as a club, you are all mentors, and I'm, I was just happy to have an excuse to come and do this again. And I've drawn all kinds of notes, I made some stuff to take home.
Wonderful, thank you.
Could we tell Gail the outcome of the vote?
Susan, there's an announcement just...
Okay, okay.
That's coming up. Lynn?
Well, thank you for giving me the opportunity to come and enjoy your club. One of the things I found from this club, besides the energy that's in the room and the camaraderie, is the fact I really enjoy all your evaluations. I've really, I'm really up on evaluations these days. I think that evaluations are what makes a club and gives value to Toastmasters. The speaking is fine, but I, I really like the evaluation, so I enjoy the evaluations I put in.
Thank you. Do we have any announcements, JC?
Good evening, Madam Mayor Director, 2827, and fellow Toastmaster members. You, you have paid your whole year dues, but you will, I will get it done, submit it to TI for the session of April to September 2018. So those who of you are contesting, or contesting going up for the contest, go ahead. The club's in good standing order, and those who are you not contesting for competition, please go out, encourage you all to help, and you can do any roles that you need to take on. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
The, letting Gail know the results of the con, uh, the conversation that we had as a club. The vote was to donate $100 towards the hospitality suite as, and, as a named sponsor, named host.
Okay.
Okay?
God, thank you very much.
Yeah, allow, allow to say MVP donated to the cause.
Okay, and I hope that you let the club know what I put at the beginning of my wish list.
Yes, we, we announced the wish list, and that's...
We decided to give you money instead.
No, no, my little blurb about you guys.
There was a blurb? I move to reopen the vote.
The, the blurb, many of you are aware that High River Toastmasters are hosting the hospitality suite. In keeping with the convention theme, Pathways to Success, we've named our oasis, Suite the Fork and the Road. A place to socialize, rest, and enjoy the camaraderie of being a Toastmaster. Although we already have gained a reputation for hospitality, this is a big project for us, and so we turn to our mentors, our friends at MVP, to lend us a hand.
Gregoray?
Today I heard vote in the area contest tomorrow night, that's for eight ten. They are still looking for judges and partners.
Okay, Friday night.
Friday night, yes. It's, it's south of Portland.
Six thirty is...
The contest starts at six thirty, but arrives by, by six o'clock. And you have, or the, you can vote to somebody who goes on if you're interested.
You're raising your hand for...
To speak.
Then speak, speak, the hammer's about to fall.
With the videotapes, videos that I've been doing, what I've been doing is trying to do a quick edit and put it up on the MVP YouTube channel. So, give me a couple of days or whatever, and I'll have this up on the, on the, on the channel. So that's where you'll be able to get your, your speech. I put it up on the YouTube channel as public, because we're, there's more professionals than non-professionals in this club. And I like to put it up on public so that other people can see what MVP is capable of. However, if anyone does not wish their video to be, to be up on the site, let me know, and I will remove it. I'm kind of hoping that everyone will allow their video to be up on the site. It's great advertisement for MVP, and we are champions.
Thank you, Richard. We have one last thing from Val.
Okay. I really wanted to compete in the contest and I couldn't, we were waiting and the dates changed. I watched for evening entertainment that YouTube, and I watched the entire contest from start to end. And it was so much fun to be sitting, okay, the palms are in strange. Oh, well done, and I really appreciate Richard and Eric for seeing me when you were there.
And Freddie went up this afternoon.
Thank you.
MVP members, when are we kind of...
MVP members, when are we kind of officially handing over the check to High River?
Tonight.
As soon as you can, JC, if you have the checkbook, do it now. If not, then as soon as you got it and get it to us.
Wonderful meeting, thank you all for coming.